She's ready now, lady.
I would probably put it on the shelf.
Okay, so 5:30 and we have our public hearing tonight. Water and Sewer Race and the Water and Sewer Race. Is any public...
On the go?
Yeah.
Beckett, you want to say something?
He just said tonight.
What did he hear from the water?
Okay, so I'm correct. Our water bill will start being seventeen dollars instead of thirteen dollars. True?
January 1st. January 1st.
It's 30 minutes.
Uh-huh, yeah. Is somebody in your house or...
I actually know not, but there's... Oh, how they want to take one somewhere, but I'm not there.
Yeah. Well, there was some guy that called a couple weeks ago. Said he'd been there very well looking around. It was interesting. And I thought, I'll see if they're coming by. But I don't think they're going to look for us.
Oh, yeah. I don't know if that's...
Do you need to let them know?
Where is Tom? I wouldn't think...
You need to let them know. Do you need to let them know?
We got one of them out. They married for that one. She was thinking, yeah, the other side of the door. And she saw it through the leaves.
Was that Mary before?
There's still... I mean, that she wanted to... But every time we get a note, I think it was... We had a little... We were getting called later. Hey, can I make sure? Other groups, so we're basically...
Are you sure you're not this?
It is pretty faulty or something.
You sure? Yeah. How about my second year until it goes down? And I'll communicate to you.
I just said, I'll charge you something if I could do that.
Done an excellent job at the school, lady.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, I would like it, but I... That was very well done.
Thank you. And we just got the reason why our speaker doesn't...
I got one suggestion.
What's that?
I've been to several families at that place and you cannot... We need either a different sound system or better sound system.
I agree.
But if you're sitting in the back when people talking on that microphone...
So we almost have speakers coming in the back for y'all. Yeah.
I couldn't hear anything that woman said.
Okay.
Because I don't hear everybody anyway.
Yeah.
But we couldn't hear it.
I'll talk to Mr. Love and see what we can do about installing some speakers near the back. Or maybe midway down. Because that's what we need, you know?
But it's...
Should be nothing.
We've been to several places up there. You just sit very far back and I can hear.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that.
Of course, the kids, they talk night about our...
Yeah. Yeah, little kids.
But like with the lady, I couldn't hear her.
She just said back to my dear...
Did you get the new car yet? Sorry, get that new car yet? The new new car or the new new car?
No, she didn't get it.
We got the Apollo. What all they had to do is... They had to change out the motor and change out some drive axles, seals, wiring, all kinds of... They do it up here? Yes, up there, turn it on. I think I wonder why it was messed up on...
No, we called some folks here.
Well, it was the same. They were trying to run stuff direct from the lines last to the back.
She brought it home.
I brought it to LA Grayman. To wire up the lights and bring in the siren and all that. Basically, they sprained the body and catch on fire. Much stuff with the wire up in there.
Could you hear the kids singing?
I'm sorry?
Could you hear the kids singing?
Yeah.
You just couldn't hear the speaker? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. He was all...
Beverly got the speakers re-put up?
I'll tell you what, that little...
I think he was getting stored in.
I got him saxophone, that shit. I made it trade.
Oh, yeah.
That's, um, that's that fault. It's that fault. He graduated two years ago.
Well, he don't... He's not very good. It's what he does.
He, um, well, he was in music school. And he told me he dropped out of music school because he just paid a little eight hundred dollar scholarship. What they're done for. So he's playing gigs right now. I guess he's studying something else.
He has playing or what?
He and his dad had, during the marriage festival, they were up here. I don't know what the band's called. They were banned at that place.
Oh, they're...
Yeah. Now, he's awesome on that saxophone.
It's all like if they're open morning.
Yeah. His playing style, it turned up pretty much. It's very grand old.
It's very odd. I told him that. Mr. Love asked him back for Christmas program. So he's gonna come back and play for us.
Do you have any over Christmas program?
December, yeah. The Christmas program is... Check that, fill out my calendar out.
I'm done, man.
The seventeenth.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday at 1:30.
We might can make that.
And we're doing a Christmas play on the Christmas program itself.
Wednesday the seventeenth at 1:30.
And fellow fifth graders get some Christmas play.
The Christmas play that you were ever here?
Feel lucky if you did to do it because I can give one of mine out to the corporate.
And they've all asked me, oh, can I be this poor? Can I be this poor? I thought, I'll give it to you, it's up to your teachers.
They should all be...
I just did.
I was lucky I was one of the kids that was sleeping, so I actually slept. I got some in your pajamas. I can rock pillow for the night.
This is called... All of Santa's little helpers are involved in putting on...
I think I'll take some time off of that.
I was singing, I went...
Because if I'm taking time off, they'll boot me out of work. Y'all see me sleaze him back here, you know I'm rolling down. You see me sleaze him back here, you know I'm rolling down. Right, we can there anytime soon, not letting him keep me out the door.
Amanda took that tree home, set it on the pizza table. Cameron come over that evening, he hung it. This is my tree, this is my tree. Yep, this is true. I said, no, this isn't my tree, but you can forget. For what? No, no, no. You both gonna make a trip. You both have enough money. You know the Saints lost to the 49ers every day of the time. It should be LSU. Though Alabama beat LSU, it'll be kind of...
That's been our record as year that we gave. That actually won that.
Yes, they should have won that.
They should not.
He's still...
Well, maybe he's that's it.
We were at February yesterday, that... I had the best of the Panthers.
Yeah. Maybe I'll see that.
Well, when I went to sleep...
You can't go. I just go with Bill, go with thirteen kids fall out there.
You still want that? Where's he going? Everybody else can...
I ain't had it back on camera.
I bet somebody's...
They're very paid on my...
Can Vito what you use to place to help us buy that with?
Yeah, I'm not gonna let it come out.
You got home with that... That means everywhere that the paint are out.
We're talking about ways of...
I'm actually have a flag in the workplace. We had that round of...
Oh, really? Probably didn't have it out.
He is... Over there in the house. I was thinking it was, but I wasn't sure for how... Everybody chose their names. And they have that, it was our own teacher, they have that. This is your reason. Can we put stuff on the cameras? So... You can all fix that. Well, I got some... You don't need that. You don't need to know.
What I need is talk to my view. Your name after...
It right there. Right in front of that. London is for the... And Temperance was... She was named Temperance because of that one, then named Timby. And I... I was wondering where you got that. Her name's Temperance. Temperance for that, all the letters are named Timby. And I'm like...
Sounds a little bit like a doll.
And then, and then I was like, oh, Bones. That woman's name on Bones is Temperance. I said, how about we meet them in... I was stammering the morning. I was like, okay. And I refused to let him call her Timby.
But I call her Miss T.
Well, it's better than what I call her. I call her fat girl. She answers to that.
She's like, no, I call her Miss T.
Everybody call her T, Miss T, Sweet T. I go, hey, fat girl, here she comes. She's chungier than everybody else. And she loves food, no matter what it is. Feed it to her and watch her. She just enjoys every bit.
I got a apostle from my house. I knew I had a hole out there under a shed there. I see all the pine dug out on the whole shed, which didn't bother me. But then we put one rise in the house and everything, been a thing around. Very next day, there was people holding up there. I guess it goes between spots and everything. Gone up to the trap out there this morning, so it won't be long, hopefully.
Well, when you catch seven, put your trap out. I'm gonna shoot the two that are on my porch and keep eating on my cat food, or do you?
Well, you can, or cats, but dogs will do it.
That's where my father would be to my house. He gets drunk, that likes to show up at about three o'clock in the morning. And he sits under my bedroom. He don't go anywhere else. But I think he knows where I am. And he sits under there. And I wake up at three o'clock in the morning.
Well, we were dating, I would drive in from out of town. His mom had whisper, I'd say whisper. And I had a little question of a litter of stones that I really...
Are you sure? How we doing today? Trying to recover from this two terrible losses.
I don't know, bang off where I grew four years. I see, and now it's time to come out.
Good, we best good, better. Think if one's there, they don't want to play with it. How about you guys?
Get some of the ride, the first time we ever come. To get her here on... I just... And the festival, which is... I'm on my way there in the... And I went ahead and had it thrown over here. Throw monkey balls under the house. I asked this young lady, is the tall one ready? Because I think they're seeing... Where? Okay, super chair. Yeah.
I got it so...
Oh, yeah, they claim so probably anyway, so they... That's a good one. She said, yeah, I'm gonna be at the battle. She said, he had... I was probably... But I just got that one out there. And it's smart like that. That's a coat.
Everything, all of those... This one is a full size. It's all that.
Will any of them be... It's cheap. And she was down about this much. So when you...
I'm gonna keep it on the list then. Get the dog.
Oh, yeah.
Back when I was young, it was...
Pink size. But yeah, my shams. Yes, I don't have pink though. Just get down, watch it. I don't know, I don't know. It's fragile. White, all the time. And it's all square. It's all three inch square. Yeah, see, this is a three inch square. Even if it was a three inch square. So when you split it over on the back, it's all... And then loaded in white thread. So... It's white.
Is she sure?
We watched it today. I mean, this is not the most... I love this one. Please, please, we were talking. This one can come over that. This one...
She got one, Susan, I got one that...
Anyway, this one has the rest color back. This is the one. The rest is the orange. Makes the orange, and purple makes the back purple. Just came out, you take it. A dollar?
Dollar.
Oh, you do the whole. This is a little bit... Those are the... This one is...
You went to... You ever...
Yeah.
Did you get it very far there? I just... I'm fine. Get the hose, so... Yeah.
The top was all...
I get the same thing. I played, I played... I got some of my clothes in the store. Kind of, kind of, kind of sold out with the...
Really? Got any more to give for what's...
I have to go down there with the... I'm saying, I don't know. I just go down there with Limpin' and... That's what I'm saying.
Have they not played that one? Have they not played American Lady and Play?
I've played Arkansas. You're not, you're not playing it on... Arkansas in Arkansas, he ain't got war. Not Arkansas, he not getting... Not now, this...
You get wronged out? Exactly. Not next to the door. It's had... Look, we've been driving along and... But you could see...
You can taste...
We almost passed her.
Here, give me another phone.
Sure, I'll kill him. And...
She gave him seventy dollars. He only got one more. Well, see, last week she gave him seventy dollars. And then she'll give her a more. Day and a half later, he's like... She's not like you. The same argument, Earl, that the God... And in the Lord behind us, we are the same in comparison. The girl in the corner is next to me, she's just like...
Are you Miss Love, babe? Okay.
Man, you like...
Uh, well...
Me? I done it for Halloween. I done it for Halloween.
You got, you got... You want that color hair changing around you?
I didn't think she was serious. She buys the cheapest part of her hair.
Witch or something.
We put tattoos on her. Going wild and selling it to my hair. And I had it. She got married to somebody before Halloween. It's been that color. Love paper, like... Well, maybe since it's because I have... Like... Yeah, because I was like... Because when I started doing it all, I was like, oh, my goodness. It's always... It's done. He's like, oh, no, I'm away. This is kind of fast. Like, you're... Got her red. But it did all in, he was like, you're done. And it kind of... I still go, ah, I went on to get there.
Anyway, anyway, please, please chill out.
Might she help you?
It's, um...
Yeah, they, they weren't talking to you.
They in the bookstores to see if I put them in there? Nice when they... Very... A bookstore I go to in Lake Charles, uh, where's that at?
You don't go in Lake Charles, you go in Lanesville.
Have you got a bookstore in Lanesville? I go to one in Lake Charles.
Bookstore?
Yeah.
Oh, your reading book. Your reading book.
Yeah. Trying to think of streets or...
Is it Bookseminum on Ryan?
Uh, the Bookseminum, they won't even talk to him. He's gotta have an agent and be published.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's one of them.
And Barney Little... She ran the car, and you can't reach her.
I just know, I'm just... I think I got the...
So far, so good. I mean, if you're self-employed, they won't even talk about... Married or lived or died.
Is it any, you sitting in that, in that cluster, not over there? Because I have... I'm running the yard. That's what I call it. It's all right.
That they go about sixty thousand miles. Transition. At sixty thousand miles, transition down.
Twenty six dollars, ninety five cents. We didn't say nothing to them.
I got her burger. I was trying to...
She raised one.
Her sister.
He just need to do... He needs to figure out...
Yeah. That's a possibility.
With this new...
Sure, man. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I never thought about it.
We can have a whole...
I just...
Do you have that last...
They got the book. Everybody that has...
They supposed to be...
You are often... That's so much weird, but not...
Obviously, being in heart and...
That was like her. Really? He said, I'll pull over, you can come back though.
Some of that share my mind. He's always in there.
Does your hair...
Show down.
Short.
It's out.
I don't...
The...
And she's going to grab the bag.
About what?
That long back here. So short, cheap. I have a apartment, it's supposed to be about...
And it'll get everywhere.
You'll show them what you did.
Yeah, I was, um, helping track patients and... Thirty-four.
Where's your phone?
Ranch was, uh, track.
Well, that was... Oh, boy, you did that way. Did you make this? Well, I have a...
That was my favorite.
Okay, we have less than a minute for anybody wants to discuss on the water and sewer race. Open the bucket.
You got the black shirt?
You got the black shirt? I can't figure who want to get it, so I'll leave somebody.
You got the tender right at home, I'm gonna get it. You got one yet?
All right, since the clock, I'm gonna try to lead the order to see. You please stand for the outfit offering, taking the main stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
One question, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to be together as a group. And hopefully, whatever we do will be pleasant to your eyes. And we pray that you continue watching over the town.
And we pray that you continue watching over the town in Maryville and the surrounding area. We give you all the praise for everything that's happening to good. We choose them with praise.
Amen. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Any of them who's in the attendance? I have one, and we're gonna move down to number two. Princess Crystal Lopez for the Maryville Community Health Center.
Thank you much. Give me a minute for. For Lopez.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Approval of minutes that presented for the record meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Air motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the financial statement of October two thousand and fourteen. Air motion?
What's the name?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved. Under various comments. I'm gonna let Mr. Lopez ask and tell you how it's gonna do that. Mister John Guy. An artifact, man out of Leesville. Will be here November the twenty first at twelve thirty. To present an artifact. That will give to Mister, the Historical Society. That's Renee Parvick. That's November the twenty first at twelve thirty. November the twenty ninth is a. Book. Over at Community Building. The time is from ten AM to one PM. Uh, it's supposed to be his author is there. Uh, Mister Allen, Mister Gilery, Perkins. And Mrs. Townsley. I think it's gonna be there for the event. There'll be books there, I guess you can buy. There'll be refreshments be served. His purpose of the book day is to showcase local authors and celebrate the love of reading.
Where'd you say that's gonna be?
Community building. Maryville Community Center. November twenty ninth, starting at ten AM to one PM. Uh, we've had some very good veterans talk to here. Saturday and today at school. Uh, tomorrow is Veterans Day. I hope everyone of you enjoy your day. But also remember it was paid for a price. For that day that, uh, for tomorrow is Veterans Day.
Does that mean I have to take off the mask?
Uh, I gotta work, you going to work too.
Even more reasons you can work.
There you go. I'm going to work, you working. I'm gonna call and make sure you work.
Under our business now. Chapter fifteen entitled Water and Sewer. Section fifteen, that's one age entitled Water Race. I hope you're having fun of what the changes are gonna be. Uh, it's open to the public. All your residential rates go from thirteen dollars to seventeen dollars per month effective January the first two thousand and fifteen. Do I hear a motion on this? Any discussion?
Yeah.
Uh, January the fifteenth, so it will come out.
January the first two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
January the first.
January first. January the old.
I think the bill, the bill will go out in December, but it go back in January the first. But that's a holiday, but it still affect in January the first. Yes.
You still have the on. Sure over here.
No, they own city sewer.
They own city sewer.
Their rates are down there on that page if you'll look. And find out you're there, what your charges are. What our parish code? Any discussion on this?
It's fair of me.
I hear a motion?
A motion to accept that or reject?
Second?
Fair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, okay. Moving on to our. Number two now, this is chapter fifteen title Water and Sewer. Section fifteen, that is three three of title user charges. Uh, this was never ever in our arness. Uh, you'll see I got it highlighted there at number four. In addition to the charges, uh, for each connection for a mower. If required, there will be the expense of the mower and material with which the town is charged. That goes back to the individual. If they want to have that done, it's their cost.
You talking about a hookup or?
No, not about a mower underneath a road. Uh, like one ninety up here. Uh, we've had several discussions with those people. Will, Williams up there. And, um. It would be several thousand dollars. First of all, you'd have to get a permit from DOT. You'd have to have a license. Plumber come in, you'd have to have a mower to come in. They'd have to put a casing in and put a pipe inside of the casing. Just, just be able to prepare to make the mower. And that's several thousand dollars. And, uh, uh, just not pleased with what the town with that.
Hear that?
So this is something that never was in the arness and I'd like to put in. Now, we do do water bores, but we have up to a two inch. But for sewer, which you'd have to probably go at least a five or sixteen bore. But they'd have a pipe inside of a pipe. Or under a highway. But this is strictly a sewer bore. Is there any discussion on this?
It, it's, uh. Where it goes across to, uh, the housing project up there? Is there no way you can keep paying for that?
No, it don't go across the highway. All that is a sewer goes to the back right there. Charles Jones. He goes to the back to the west.
Oh, okay.
It don't, there's nothing underneath that road.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'm making motion to accept the changes that are written.
I accept. First taken.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose it. So do. All right, uh, discussion of citations and court costs. And I think, uh. That's your car, but. Anybody lawyers here tonight, whoever you want to. Present it.
Well, I know we were talking about raising the court cost because it was at, what, seventy dollars?
Seventy five.
Seventy five?
But he has found out some.
Yeah, well, first of all, there is. A new schedule that be coming out and is out. Uh, I believe it comes effective this month as far as violation fees amounts. Uh, I'll bring that schedule to the city, the town. And. To have a breakdown of court costs, I know the standard is thirty dollars. So in addition to that, you'd have to, you'd have to associate with, uh, another. And that's a thirty dollar citation for each account that you charge. So if you get four, it'd be up to a hundred twenty dollars on that. In addition to that, you may have certain funds that if you support, you can charge more on top of them. I just need to know where we are going right now with this seventy five dollar breakdown and what's available off there. So as soon as we can have a better understanding of that, I think it would. We can move forward from there.
I agree because I don't know. I know we have specific court costs. I mean, what happens if you decide that you dismiss the charges? Can they pay court costs? Is that just thirty dollars? Or is that?
Depending on how many citations it goes. Is that what you're saying?
How many counts on the side?
Yeah, well, I find that's what I mean. So if they got stopped and they had to tell by measure and it was speeding, that's two.
Don't do. Paying.
And then that would be three. So that would be.
Ninety dollars.
That would be more feasible that way. I thought it was just one slight rate, but they just pay thirty bucks and it's not by count.
Okay.
So that makes more sense if they got more counts.
So the lady that is?
Twelve? And you, there's new rates coming out or?
New rates have came out after this legislative session. And I'll bring those to we have in the A's office.
I say we wait. I'd like to wait until we get those new ones out. So we can have a better idea. Of what changes they made and then we can go from that.
Same type of.
Type of.
Yes, I would like to table it since we can get everything together.
I agree.
Yeah, with the new rate changes.
So you want to table it through the next meeting or?
How long will it be for you get that out to us?
Yeah.
I can add it for next meeting. All before then, we can discuss it.
Yeah. Good night, sweetie.
I second. Won't you take it to the next meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Take it. Under new businesses, uh, police personnel, I turn that over to the chief.
All right, higher shit. Uh, didn't work out like a ton. It was good for a couple of months, for a couple of weekends. Uh, our call volume went way down. I think just by posting on the news. They helped us out a lot. And they're getting a lot of calls here lately. Call to do gets annoying and stuff like that. Uh. During that time. We had. Two arrest for warrants, which were not all the warrants they were doing this recovery of. For, uh, pot checks. And. Three drivers under suspension. And the driver under suspension being unpaid traffic citation. We're not just arresting everybody from driving under suspension. I told them that. They have, they have, they throw a driver under suspension for not paying traffic citation. They go ahead and arrest them because as soon as they say they're gonna pay the traffic citation.
What about, uh, patrolling the theft and things like that?
Well, like, like I was saying, our call volume went way down. Since it was posted in the newspaper and just a couple of days when we did, uh, did the higher shit. But we only did it two weekends. Didn't have too good a turnout like I expected.
We pick it up, it's all necessary for now.
Yeah. We're gonna be going into executive session.
All right, did we amend the agenda for that?
He said you didn't, he didn't think you had, you wanted to go to the folks. Like you can save the session.
Is that, that tough to go?
Exactly the session.
Huh?
If you can amend, have anyone amend, go and call to.
So we need to.
We need to take that overtime deal off of the, uh.
I think. Say what? Are you gonna do that or do whatever we're gonna do?
Yeah, he said it doesn't date anymore, so.
You know.
Didn't work out. I'd love to keep it, but I don't see where we're gonna do it.
Additional.
So do we have a.
Yeah, we voted on it for eight months.
Yeah, a month.
Yeah.
So if anybody.
After a month.
Cancel?
Yeah.
Should I recommend, uh?
There's a place, uh, chief of police.
Yeah. Yeah, really?
Don't beat them.
Yeah, I make a motion and then just lock the higher shit.
Yes, please. I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, okay. Now, but. These are the.
Have to go. They take.
Yeah, we're. As y'all decided to amend the agenda.
Get them in the gym. They need to.
Can we do it?
Part of it's gotta have a, uh, technical section potion on the door out there before you go to the.
I think you can amend.
Amend that?
The actual.
Okay. That would have to go back and, um. Put that under a new business.
Yeah.
And we're legal to that?
To amend?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
What is it? Why are we need to do this?
I'm putting Officer Arnold up for termination.
But, um, why can't we? Why does that being executive?
Because he's contested his.
Is he, uh, is he, uh, full time or?
Yes, there's.
Temporal.
It's. It's suspension of.
I only get to talk about that in the meeting.
In other words, you won't have support. Fire.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it being public if it doesn't have to go into the executive session. I don't care if it's public or not.
You already have police personnel with us. I'm.
Yeah.
They're like, hey. Hey, person in the morning, I said, he, he just said, he, he is his option.
And like, hey, hey, for the long time, if you, if you, if you, if you, it's, it's optional. I can do it public or private.
All, all, all the person we have, going to executive session.
Well, if you're just nominating, but if you want to discuss anything, then please publish on leave, etc.
Yeah, he's going to discuss it.
Maybe.
That's what he's, well, that's what he's here for.
Okay, well, uh, are we gonna make an amendment, go into executive session to discuss, uh, uh, the council and the chief's, uh, discussion?
So who are we just saying?
Oh, that's the executive one you have here.
He's my advocate.
Well, you have current camp for, we could say, they, all of us would have to leave tomorrow. Now, I'm, you know.
But I, I still say. And if you. And if you. Yeah, he's. It is his option.
I'm either way, it's not on me. I prefer it to be public.
Do I hear a motion to go?
I may want to actually amend number one on the new business, police personnel, uh, amended to call it executive session. Yeah, I think executive session would be, I don't think need to be there for everybody.
Second, then? You're second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Would the rest of you please excuse yourself? So who's the different person you have with you?
That's my father, and he's my.
And you were called around. Correct, June. Around.
Now, now, what is going on since you were moved out was the, uh, chief that presented this case about an officer of camp in the council, and then, uh, taking the chief's, uh, violation for a car accident, officer of camp. So he's car accident, now in Maryville, please walk. Now, we've got a motion on it.
Okay, who did what?
I mean, the stars made the motion, but now then, second.
Yeah.
In that one. Now, we'll leave it up to Mrs. Crystal Lopez. Mrs. Crystal, your governor.
Yes, sir.
Oh, we had, you had me out there for so long.
Uh, no. Uh, I'm here to represent the Maryville Community Health Center. Uh, we've been here for about five years now, I believe, but our dental department has recently, this past August, actually gotten, uh, a dentist to come down from Lake Charles. So we wanted the, uh, complement to know so that they could, uh, be aware and let your constituents know that, uh, we have dental services now at the, uh, Community Health Center on Walker Street.
Is that on a daily basis or? Is that on a daily basis?
Uh, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
I, yeah, I personally, I, I think that, I think that is awesome. Y'all are really doing a good, a good job down there, and I hear nothing, but you look good there.
We've met some wonderful people down there. It's really a wonderful community. So just let them know, and we'll try to find as much help as we can, uh, with this economy, uh, everyone could, could use a break. So our dental fees are, are reasonable, and then we can slide those fees off to the uninsured and those who qualify, another forty percent. So we, we try our best to make it as far as far as we can.
Well, we, well, you, well, I mean, I guess some, some people may not be aware, what, what do you, what do you need to see for, you know, from people to get, about to get the discount?
For the discount, just proof of income.
Okay.
Proof of residence, uh, usually a utility bill, uh, will suffice for that. And pictured ID, and that's about all we require.
All right.
And if you have any more of these little green cards, would you recommend mine, please?
I certainly will.
Appreciate you coming to mine.
Good, good. Please get the word out for us, we still seem to be the best kept secret in Maryville.
Can we put this out on a phone line? Put that out for the dental and the, uh, still just remind the people that don't know. When everybody down in Oneville, Homaville here in, uh, Daleville, we're putting that, so it's a good thing. A lot of people, a lot of trouble, a lot of people pick for that.
Well, I knew it was back up, but I didn't know they had dentists to kill somebody.
Yeah, I think that's all, I'll put off some ideas. And I assume they can make a.
They can make.
I assume they can make a.
Certainly.
Yes.
Certainly, walking as well.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all so much. Enjoy being here.
I know. Have one of that.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public participation. And back to the public.
Stevie, gonna do anything for Christmas this year?
Iowa. Community Center, December the thirteenth, for Iowa Christmas party.
Does everybody go to, is that like a town, have everybody?
At one o'clock, yeah, everybody, one o'clock, one to four.
December the thirteenth?
December the thirteenth.
Wonderful. Is that the day we're doing the parade?
We're.
Yeah, somebody commented historical, so I have to.
Yeah, Sarah Sellers, and, and we see them doing the. I think Sarah's gonna do, because they wanna do the Christmas tree stuff in there. I'll know more details tomorrow, but they're gonna do the Christmas tree stuff, they're gonna have a walk, um, where they can start off at the museum, and then take a big walk in front of the church and come back. Um. And then. And then. I think they talked about the Christmas, um, pageant as well. Well, pageant, take a pageant.
Who's?
So after tomorrow. Uh, sorry, Sarah. Cause you'll be off tomorrow. But we have a meeting tomorrow night, and I'll call you up here.
I'm just, uh, I'm at their, uh, Christmas party, now, Maryville Christmas party. There's people in the surrounding area here, like down back. They was in that, I saw them running.
Is it?
Well, they didn't like the, the community better than they'll say.
Yeah, had everybody, yeah. Okay, I just gonna check in, I didn't know how.
Was planning a Christmas party.
We thought you would. She had me planning doing that. She good, she good, that's. The decoration.
Yeah, the guy comes, uh, Texas, he's gonna be a magic show. He knows balloons for the children, uh, make little pies and stuff. And there's a magic show. We'll probably have a little kind of thing out there for the kids. I think it'll have a hot dog, popcorn.
Nacho.
Nacho.
Nacho. Nacho cheese. I'm not sure that, uh, concession store.
Town.
You guys wanna do that, their, the decoration of the light bulbs for town? Where is the decorations?
And the ball and.
Ball.
So.
Yeah, let's say, do we have any lights to replace those? We should ask for the new one? Uh, let's see, maybe we should just ask for donations, everybody's got extra Christmas lights for me. That's what we do with all lights and re-shrunk. Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna say, the council, I think y'all made a wise decision tonight. I've been out and I waited a lot, chief, but I never put one of them. If the chief or the guy he couldn't wait with, he was gone. And I think y'all made a good decision.
I like, he looked at him just the way he was acting, his walking attitude. I mean, I'm, I'm sure he evacuated to the grave, but I don't think it came about for nothing. And, um.
He the chief.
That's it.
That's what he mean.
We put our, we put our confidence in there, holding him. Yeah, he the secret, we had to eat back in. Yeah, I think you oughta have some chili dogs or something for us.
I'm gonna win Friday, you come up to the game. We gotta work the concessions down, so. We'll get you chili dog. Well, thanks for chili.
Uh, I can hold on, I can hold it, chili. Home, can't even, home, can't even eat hotch or not get all the barbecue.
That's a great, before you hit?
No, wow, mom.
Let's say, do you break it? Did you get my bar, you'll eat nice. Neither there.
Okay, now, here, I hear a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I say it.
All in favor? Thank y'all for coming out.
Got any hate for the town?